Praise the Lord, everyone. Welcome to our September seventeenth, I mean seventeen twelve, two twenty twenty five City Council meeting. We have invocation by Mr. Dima. Followed by the pledge.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for the privilege of serving the people of this city. Grant us wisdom, unity, and peace as we do the work before us tonight. Help us remember the widows, the orphan, and the innocent unborn, and lead us into acts of compassion and justice. We also honor our veterans who have shown the greatest love that you spoke of by being willing to lay down their lives for others. May we live each day with gratitude for their sacrifice and protection of our freedom. Bless our first responders and all who are in need and guide our decisions so they bring peace and good to our city. We ask all this in Jesus's name. Amen.
A pledge. Ms. Alicia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight's City Council agenda is divided into four sections: consent agenda, public hearing, public comment, and general business. The first section is consent agenda. It includes routine items that can be approved with one vote.
Discuss.
Just that mission right now?
Little smoke, please.
The motion passes six with one absent. The next section is public hearings. These are required by law or directed by council. The procedure: Staff will give a presentation. The public can give comments. Individuals can have three minutes to speak. If speaking for a group, you have five. Group speakers must say which group they represent. Each group gets one spokesperson. Each speaker must say their name and their locality of residence. After public comments, the public hearing will close, and the matter will rest with council. Agenda item number six. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving a conditional use permit to allow the use of an existing structure at thirty-two hundred Carroll Avenue as a pickleball athletic club. Ms. Rachel Freshizen, City Planner, will provide a summary of the request.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As the clerk said, the purpose of this conditional use permit petition is to allow the use of an existing structure as an athletic club for pickleball in an I-2 light industrial district at thirty-two hundred Carroll Avenue. The city's future land use map recommends employment to uses for the subject property. The existing I-2 light industrial district was established in nineteen seventy-eight, and this district athletic clubs and recreational sports facilities are permitted upon approval of O C U P from council. The subject property consists of approximately one point two acres and contains a sixty-six hundred square foot steel frame structure. The petitioner is proposing to house the pickleball court, excuse me, pickleball club in this building. An additional seventy-five hundred square foot structure has been permitted for construction adjacent to the subject structure, and the property is bound by a mix of residential, industrial, and commercial uses. The use of the structure as a pickleball club should have limited impact on the surrounding area. The club will only use a portion of the subject property, and the adjacent structure may still be used as industrial space. The structure could also be converted back to industrial space as needed in the future, as the conditional use permit would not change the underlying zoning. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this petition at their meeting on September twenty-fourth. Thank you, and I will be happy to answer any questions after your public hearing.
Would a petitioner like to make a presentation?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Norman Walton. I'm with Perkins and Orson. Good evening. As Rachel mentioned, this project is currently under construction. Perkins and Orson submitted a site plan in February of this year, and this was currently being built. The proposed use at the time was warehouses, excuse me, was a warehouse facility in an industrial zone property. While marketing, while marketing the property, it became evident that the pickleball use was a thing. And so now we're here to make this presentation and request the S U P for the use as athletic facility to house the pickleball. The overall plan is adequate as is. We're not going to change the layout, the stormwater management works, water sewer works. We will have to amend the site plan to move some of the parking around, add landscaping and whatnot. And at that, at that time, we'll submit a lighting plan. So that's pretty much all I have. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this project? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition of this project?
My name is Todd Hall. Ladies and gentlemen of the City of the Council, I'm the property owner of thirty-two thirty-five Mayfire Drive, which is shown in picture one of that packet. I apologize that it's in black and white. Color would have done it more justice. I'm opposed to the conditional use permit for the property in question. The location and placement of the steel building has already reduced the values of the homes adjacent to it. The use of the building as a pickleball court is only going to reduce the values further. As shown in picture one, this is what my property used to look like. Please note all the trees and vegetation at the back of the lot. Your six and six A, this is what the back of my property looks like now. I'm opposing the conditional use permit because there's nothing in this middle packet saying where and what kind of lighting is going in. Per the city code ordinance, section thirty-five point two dash fifty-two point one, the I-2 district is intended to provide for industrial uses of a variety of types that produce relatively low levels of noise, light, and other nuisances. In general operations, or in general operations are appropriate industries that do not involve nuisances discernible at the lot line and do not deal with large volumes of customers on a continuous basis throughout the day. Lighting is discernible at the property line due to the removal of the vegetation. Bad lighting locations and poorly designed lighting can spill over into the neighboring homes and can cause glare affecting the homes at night, interfering with the property owner's quiet enjoyment. Because Dante's properties removed the trees and the vegetation on my property without any kind of permission, I had no buffering and screening, which would have blocked a lot of the lighting from his building as well as some of the noise and sounds. It has also hurt the aesthetic value of my property. Second reason I'm opposing the conditional use permit is there's nothing in the seminal package addressing the noise and increased traffic. Pickleball generates significant noise from paddle strikes and player activity. Indoor courts often amplify this noise. This noise will also be compounded by increased traffic and outdoor congregation. According to this middle packet, this place is going to be open twenty-four seven with no internal supervision. There's nothing in this middle package stating leagues and/or tournaments will not be allowed here. A twenty-four seven pickleball court is going to attract traffic from outside the neighborhood, raising safety risk and diminishing the neighborhood tranquility. Since this is a residential area, the residents are going to be sleeping at night in order to work the next day.
That, that's, that sound mean your time is up?
Can I, can I get one more minute? I'm the only one protesting.
Go ahead, sir.
Without soundproofing standards and operational limits, increased noise is going to adversely affect the resident's quality of life. In conclusion, existing adjacent businesses here operate roughly seventy-five during the day and have little to no traffic later than five P M. They are located on the other side of the street away from the residences. Some of you may say the use of this metal building could be worse, but their uses could be better. Some of you may say I doubt if people will be coming in at three A M. to play pickleball, but there's nothing saying that there won't be. It may turn out this is when the most traffic is occurring. I respect, respect that the City Council direct approval of this C U P and this project until more comprehensive for you is conducted, including but not limited to a lighting study, traffic study, noise study. Members of the council, thank you for your attention to this matter. This meeting is about to, this meeting is about responsible land use and integrity of a neighborhood. I urge you to act in the best interest of the community and deny this permit. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition? Ms. Alicia, are there any boys, male, or citizen?
There are none.
Would you like to make a rebuttal?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had a lengthy discussion about this at Planning Commission. We think that there are much more egregious uses that could be here than a pickleball court. And the gentleman is correct. I mean, this is planned to be open twenty-four hours a day, but if there's a machine shop there, that too can be open twenty-four hours a day with three shifts of work coming in and out. There are tire facilities or heavy automobile repair that could be allowed here that could be much more noisy than a pickleball court. The pick, pick, excuse me, pickleball courts will be housed inside. The lighting for the park and will be on the opposite side of the building from where the residential's are in the rear. We will provide any screening as required by the zoning ordinance. We'll provide a lighting plan as required by the zoning ordinance, which will be, of course, reviewed and approved by staff. If you have any other questions, I'll be more than happy to answer.
Yes, sir, I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Sound insulation.
It, it will be insulated. We're planning on heating and cooling and, of course, temperature control, so it will be insulated. Yes, sir.
You're going to use sound insulation to cut down on the sound?
So, yes, it will be insulated. I don't know if there's a noise ordinance? So it's not part of zoning, but it's a ordinance after eleven P M. that the noise can't, you kind of asking.
Yes.
And we'll comply with that, of course. It's a city statute, so we can't not comply with that. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public hearing is now closed.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Speak to it.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. No, I mean, I understand your concerns. I really do, and I appreciate you coming out and telling us your concerns. My experience with pickleball is I don't think that there's anything that is going to be noisier. What they could do with an industrial zoned use on that would be far noisier than what you're going to get out of that. I think what you're referring to when you're discussing the noise from it being inside amplifying it, that noise is amplified inside. I don't think it amplifies to the outside. There's still going to be a buffer there. They've got insulation and sheet rock and so forth. There's just, it's going to. I think that when it's all said and done, you'll be pleased that's what's behind you instead of a machine shop. I really believe that, and I hope that's the case. And I think that they're going to be great neighbors for you. I really believe that, and I think it's a really neat idea, right? I mean, we're always looking for stuff that's constructive for people to do, especially at all hours of night. Guess what? Here's an option. Get off the streets. Go and play some pickleball. I mean, it's really something unique that we don't have in this city. And if that's something that will attract, you know, younger generations that, that can keep them busy at night when they're awake instead of doing things that probably aren't as productive, I think it behooves us to try to support that type of business in our community. So I appreciate the work you guys put into this. I appreciate. Really, it's just a creative idea, creative way to do it, and I wish you great success.
Ms. Marie?
Yeah. Respect your concerns, sir. I'm reading through the, the report of the meeting. It says all the courts in the club will be indoors. Users will need to call ahead for scheduled, to schedule their time slot to play, given the number of courts. There should roughly only be ten people at the facility at any given time. It says that there is insulation currently, that the lighting will have to meet the city code. So it looks like these things have already been considered. You know, a lot of us, there's a lot of neighborhoods that have outdoor tennis courts that are open, you know, to play late at night, and you have no insulation from the sound of, of tennis matches and so forth. And, you know, there can be a lot of people playing at that time, and, and, you know, people survive those, those, those games. And again, it's good that people are, are exercising rather than doing other things that can cause a lot of loud noise that is, is problematic. So hopefully we'll be, be good partners for the neighborhood, be good neighbors to the neighbors. And I agree, I think it's a better option than other things, so I'm happy to support it. I think it'll be a good addition to the city.
Dr. Walton? Thank you. Thank you for your information. Just a question. As far as the trees being cut down, is there a certain buffer that they already have or supposed to have in place when you have different property zones?
I think I heard Mr. Hall say that he thought they cut down his trees, which would be a civil matter. But because there is, this, this area, including Mr. Hall's property, is also zoned industrial, there is not a required buffer when it's industrial against industrial, which I think makes it even more favorable that this use is going in rather than something that could go by right.
And as far as once they present their lighting plan, is there a certain trajectory of the lights that, where they don't go into the residential areas? I'm not sure how that works.
Yeah, so it will be checked against our lighting ordinance to make sure it doesn't exceed the maximum foot candles, which is a measurement of lighting. And they, they have indicated they, they intend to submit a lighting plan to make sure everything's in compliance.
Thank you. Last question I have, thank you, is that, is it, is it unmanned facility? If, if the neighbors have a concern or something, is there some kind of a person that's there working? Has it been just twenty-four hours? Is it a twenty-four hour staff or?
So, so since this is a membership type of facility, you know, there will be, I guess, a number, I don't, it's not going to be manned twenty-four seven. So there'll be somebody, I, I think it'll be a key code of FOB or that you get in and come in. If there's an incidence there, there will be some type of emergency response system or contact information that'll be provided so the members of the club can call whomever they need to, depending on the situation, of course, to, to handle any kind of disruption or whatever.
And, and maybe also something for the neighbors that do have a challenge, some, some way of communicating with the neighbors or, or someone they can call if they do have some concerns about the property once it's, once it's built.
Mr. Dante's is here. His office is right around the corner, literally right across the road from this facility. He's doing a lot of work in this community along Carroll Avenue. We have several projects going on with Mr. Dante's right now, so it doesn't appear he's planning on moving anytime soon. So his office is there, and so I think his door is open if there's any issues with the neighbors for him. They'd come in and speak to him.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Good.
Ms. Timmer?
I, I'm a member of the project. Subscribe.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
No more discussion. Let's go.
The motion passes six with one absent. Agenda item number seven. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving a conditional use permit to allow the use of an existing structure at twenty-one thirty-four Westerly Drive as a large group home. Ms. Rachel Freshizen, City Planner, will provide a summary of the request.
Thank you. Again, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, the purpose of this conditional use permit petition is to allow the existing structure to be used as a large group home for up to thirty-six individuals in an R-four high-density residential district at twenty-one thirty-four Westerly Drive. Our city's future land use map- Our city's future land use map recommends mixed use for the property. Generally, these are meant to be a balanced mix of residential, commercial, civic uses and open space. The existing R4 zoning was established in 1978 and in this district, large group homes are permitted upon approval of a conditional use permit from council. The property was previously used as the Miller Home for Girls, which is a private nonprofit, uh, group home for girls under the age of 21 who cannot live with their families. The subject property consists of approximately five acres and contains a 19,000 square foot structure constructed in 1959. If the petition is approved, the existing structure would be used as a large group home for up to 36 people in a program for substance use treatment services. The petitioner plans to use the property in its current configuration and layout. To reiterate some information that was shared in a presentation to physical development committee earlier today, all state and federal law would consider this to be a recovery residence. The city zoning ordinance does not define or distinguish recovery residences from group homes. Therefore, this would be considered a large group home by our zoning ordinance. The surrounding neighborhood has a mix of residential uses at various densities, along with a number of medical, office and commercial uses that are located nearby. Planning Commission recommended approval of their petition at the meeting, uh, of the petition at their meeting on October 8th. And this item was presented at your business item briefing on October 28th. At that meeting, some council members expressed that they may want to include a condition about compliance with, uh, state regulations. So there is a draft condition that's provided on your agenda summary that states when and where required by applicable law, Sabrius would obtain all required approvals for the use of 2134 Westerly Drive as a large group home, which will be regulated as a recovery residence by DBHDS. So that condition could be included in the motion for the CUP, uh, at council's discretion. Thank you.
Thank you. Petition like to make presentation? Could you state your name and?
CEO of Sabrius. And, uh, Mayor Taylor and council members, uh, thank you for allowing Sabrius to come forward this opportunity to introduce our plans and, and for opening a new treatment center at the, uh, subject location here in Lynchburg. Obviously it is our desire to gain your approval for this, uh, program to serve the residents of Lynchburg and other Virginians. Sabrius has been operating DBHDS licensed substance use treatment programs for adults in Southwest Virginia for over four years. The main campus is in Galax with additional programs offered in Basset and here in Lynchburg. The Galax campus features a 24 bed residential program for men and an outpatient program for up to 48 men and women. Our Basset program offers a 16 bed residential treatment program serving women, including pregnant women. Our Lynchburg program currently offers outpatient services for up to 16 men and women at our office location, which is on Timberlake Road here in Lynchburg. Sabrius also operates a DBHDS certified recovery residence for up to eight individuals at our Mimosa Drive location also in Lynchburg. All individuals who reside at that location are enrolled and actively participating in our Lynchburg outpatient treatment program. Outpatient services at our Lynchburg Center include, and I wanted to tell you a little bit about it because I think, you know, a lot of times we hear drug treatment and we don't know what all that involves and wanted you to have a picture of what we do. Outpatient services at our Lynchburg Center include group and individual counseling, treatment, education, participation in recovery oriented activities and assistance with referrals for additional treatment, jobs and housing as needed and when appropriate. Treatment services are provided five days a week for approximately six hours each day, Monday through Friday at that location. Our Lynchburg outpatient clients may commute to treatment from their home or they can stay in our supportive housing when available while they're in treatment. Those residing in our housing unit on Mimosa are transported by staff to and from the treatment center and other treatment related destinations and activities. All Sabrius programs are voluntary and we choose who to accept or refer to other behavioral health programs and community services. Admission criteria includes people with active substance use, but excludes individuals in need of acute detoxification or with sexual offenses and violent histories. A combination of state certified and licensed substance use counselors, along with peer recovery specialist, support staff and nursing professionals, conduct treatment services and provide supervision. Sabrius also employs a full-time medical director to provide medical and behavioral health consultations and treatment. Additional program and management support is provided by our clinical and administrative teams that are based in Galax and Basset. So people living in our supportive housing, recovery residence and our treatment programs are supervised by Sabrius employed and trained staff on a 24/7 basis. Sabrius staff must pa, uh, must pass background checks through Virginia DSS and DBHDS, which includes state police and FBI, to be employed by Sabrius. And any medication administration is, is also managed and supervised by our staff. So access to and from our programs is monitored. Clients are not allowed to leave the housing units or other campuses on pass without permission in advance from the staff and only when there is a therapeutic purpose. They are not allowed to use substances or bring them into the housing while residing with us, uh, and violations will result in discharge from the program, which is usually coordinated with other referral, uh, sources. We, we really work with our people to make sure that regardless of what their needs are, they're taken care of. The subject property and building at 2134 Westerly Drive, which is why we're here, is, is well suited for Sabrius's purposes as a residential treatment program. The residential home can be used as is, as was mentioned by Rachel, barring any mechanical or functional repairs that may be needed. There are no current plans to reconfigure or expand the building. There is a perimeter fence surrounding most of the property and additional fencing will be installed in places where no perimeter fence exists prior to opening the residential center. And, uh, beyond that, there is a positive economic impact to the city of Lynchburg as, uh, we're, you know, will benefit and approximately 15 to 20 new jobs will be created once the new center opens, which we would like to happen by late in the first quarter of 2026, once our licensing is secured. So there are multiple behavioral health substance use treatment providers, including Horizon Behavioral Health, Roads to Recovery and the UP Foundation within one mile of the proposed site, which offers collaborative opportunities for wraparound support, medical and behavioral services throughout the continuum of care for the clients that we serve. So Sabrius has reached out to neighboring property owners and community leaders about the proposed center. Uh, we held a community meeting for the neighbors and other community members at the Miller Home on October 23rd. Uh, this event gave us an opportunity to introduce our company plans and programs to the area residences, residents and to provide a glimpse of the space that we will be using. A lot of people who live in the area have never been there before. And so our friends at Miller Home made it possible for us to host a reception together. In fact, the reception to the proposed residential center has been positive and we look forward to being a strong business and community participant for the city of Lynchburg. So I want to, uh, thank you for letting me stand up here and present this. We've got some people that, that may have some things to say on our behalf. I do want to acknowledge our executive director of the Basset Lynchburg Program, Monica Flora, who's with us today and, and keeping with the, how this does, uh, if, if there are questions, when that set time comes, if she may join me for that. But in, anyway, I appreciate this opportunity to present to all of you about our program. Thank you.
Thank you. If we have any other questions, we'll call you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this project?
Mr. Vice Mayor, Council, uh, Ron Blackwood, um, local land developer and builder here in the community and also past president of the Miller Home for Girls. Um, while we were blessed with a great facility, the second facility, the first was right there on the hill where the plaza was that, uh, Samuel Miller had, um, bequeasted all that land to the Miller Home. And, uh, in 1875, so we're celebrating 150 years this year, uh, oldest group home in the world, um, still operating. And, um, I'm no longer on the board, but as past consecutive president for many years, um, I'm thankful for the gift of Samuel Miller and the lives that, uh, been changed in the girls, uh, countless girls through the years. The building obviously is too large for our needs now. Um, this represents a, um, positive, um, opportunity for us to go to a smaller home that's more affordable, that we can keep the doors open for when the girls, uh, do, there is a need for girls, it does arrive. And, um, anyhow, I, I look back and I think that, you know, we're nonprofit and Sabrius is a for-profit. For the first time in private land's history, the city will be able to collect a tax dollar on this property, which I think is great. Um, with that being said, um, I spoke with Mr. Fury, um, and met with him and asked him a lot of questions. While I don't know everything about what he does or how they do it, uh, I've done my research, um, but, um, I feel like, you know, it's the highest as dealing in commercial property too in my life, a highest and best use for this property instead of a tear down. Um, I think that, um, Sabrius is the perfect fit for highest and best use for this property and I support them and, uh, and what they're going to do. And I ask for your votes this evening in favor of this and thank you so much. I appreciate you all.
Anyone else who would like to speak in favor? If anybody else want to speak, just get in line. Start a line here if you want. Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name's Dustin Hatchett, um, resident of Martinsville, Virginia. And, uh, good evening to the members of council. Uh, my name's Dustin Hatchett. I'm here tonight to share my personal experience with Sabrius treatment program and the life-changing impact it's had on me, my family and now my community. I started using drugs when I was just 12 years old. For the next 28 years, addiction controlled every part of my life. I've been to treatment more than 20 times in that time period. Each time I went in, wanted to change, but I never quite believed I could. And before I came to Sabrius, I felt like a complete failure. My self-esteem and self-worth was non-existent. I didn't see a future for myself and honestly, I didn't think I'd live long enough to have one. Uh, but Sabrius was different. From the moment I arrived, I could feel something that I hadn't felt in a long time and that was hope. Uh, the staff didn't look at me like I was broken beyond repair. They treated me like a human being. They showed me compassion, patience and understanding at a time when I didn't understand myself. And they loved me until I could learn to love myself. Uh, that was a turning point in my life and Sabrius gave me that structure, accountability and the tools I needed to start believing that I could actually live differently. And for the first time, I felt seen, supported and capable of change. Uh, one person that stands out of me in my journey is Dr. Mack. And, uh, every time he saw me, he would say, we need people like you in this field. Uh, he would say things like, I can really see you going places when you need, when you leave here. And those words meant everything to me at the time, uh, when I really didn't see anything good in myself. Uh, his encouragement gave me the motivation to pursue a career in the recovery field and something that's never, I never thought that I was capable of. And today, because of that foundation, I built a surprise. I worked full-time as a certified peer recovery specialist at Envision Health in Martinsville, Virginia. Um, I was the very first peer recovery specialist hired by that company. And now through my dedication and by leading through example, uh, Envision Health is hiring more peer recovery specialists, just like me, right? It's cool. And all of that started with my experience at Sabrius. Uh, today I have 21 months sober. I'm on an apartment, a car. It's legal. It's got a inspection sticker and car insurance and all that cool stuff. Um, I'm active in the recovery community. I'm proud to say that I'm now a productive, taxpayer, member of society, right? Most importantly, I get to show the same love, patience and understanding to others that was so gracefully shown to me when I needed it most. Uh, recovery hasn't just changed my life, it's changed my family's life too. I've, I've been able to rebuild broken relationships. I once had with my mother, my father, my brother, uh, they seen the man that I've become and not the one that addiction made me into. Uh, my Papa passed away last November. He got to pass away knowing that I was changing my life and that gives me a peace of mind every day, right? My nephew, Dorian, he was born while I was in treatment. He'll never know the person that I was, right? Only the uncle that I am today. And, uh, that's what recovery does. It just doesn't save one life. It touches everyone connected to that life. It restores family, rebuilds trust and brings healing where it used to, where there used to be pain. Can I continue? Okay. Understand that some people in the community may have concerns about the opening of this treatment facility, but I want to be clear, programs like Sabrius don't bring problems, they bring solutions. And they take people who are lost, hopeless and broken and help them become people who contribute, care and give back. Uh, we should never give up on anyone. As long as people are alive, there's hope. I'm living proof of that. Sabrius gave me that hope I needed to rebuild my life, to reconnect with my family and become the man I was meant to be. So tonight I'm asking you to please look beyond the stigma and support this new facility and give others the same opportunity that I was given, the chance to heal, rebuild and to thrive. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else?
Hello, my name is Delani. Thank you. It's an honor to be here before you today. I too also attended Sabrius as well and, um, I've been in and out of treatment facilities my entire life. I'm 35 now and, um, honestly, nothing seemed to work. And, um, I can be honest with you, since I've came to Sabrius, Sabrius had, uh, had really taught me a lot about myself as an individual. I transformed from the inside out being in Sabrius. Uh, Sabrius has poured love into me with compassion until I learned to love myself. And, um, Sabrius has allowed me to realize that in order to change my situation, I have to change myself from inside. So, um, I realized that Sabrius has the necessary tools equipped to change the community that is suffering with substance use disorder, because I didn't see a life apart from substance use. That's all I ever knew. But, uh, being in Sabrius and, and, and experiencing this journey allowed me to realize that, uh, that change and transformation is possible. If I put the work in and if I, uh, learn to love myself like they loved me, then, um, then I can get better, I can get well. So I definitely truly believe that if there's any treatment facility that is worthy of a, of a, of a, of a property as this, I believe it's Sabrius, because they have, uh, definitely made a tremendous change in my life in more ways than I can truly express. Their service, uh, their service extends out far more greater than I can truly express. But, um, that's all I got to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there any, anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone want to speak in opposition of this program? Is there any discussion? From council? Yes, public hearing is now closed. Is there any discussion from council? Okay, submission.
Thank you. Thank you all and especially the last two gentlemen that spoke. Thank you for your, um, for your stories. And then I also want to thank Mr. Blackwood for coming and speaking, known Ron for 20 some years, more, something like that. Ron's opinion holds a lot of weight with me. So with that, I looked in the packet, was, where was the, you said there was a resolution with the conditions in it?
Resolution that Planning Commission recommended, which is, uh, for the conditional use permit with a maximum of 36 individuals at this location on, at the, in the description on the front page of the agenda summary, uh, towards the bottom, there's a condition about, um, applying or complying with state code and obtaining those licenses.
So that's on. Hold on. So I'm going to make, hold on, let me see. And that's, that's not the one with the condition. That's what I'm looking for is the resolution with the.
Applicable law, Sabrius will obtain all required approvals for its use of 2134 Westerly Drive as a group home, which will be regulated as a recovery residence by DBHDS with up to 36 individuals participating in substance use recovery program.
Wanted to include that additional condition. You could make a motion to say.
If that's in the agenda items, huh?
It is. It's at the very bottom.
All right, hold on. I'm looking now. That's what I was looking for. Got it. All right. So I will make a motion, um, to adopt a resolution with. to adopt the resolution with the condition and I'll read it out loud for the record, when and where required by applicable law, Sabrius will obtain all required approvals for its use of 2134 West Street Lee Drive as a large group home, which will be regulated as a recovery residence by DBHDS and I would, that's Department of Behavioral. What's that? Department of Behavioral Health and.
Until you ask. And developmental services.
And developmental services. I think we should include the whole thing and then the acronym. With up to 36 individuals participating in substance abuse recovery program. So I'll make that as a motion that we approve the petition for the CUP with that condition.
Did you all also want to include the condition? Maximum residential occupancy shall be 36 individuals.
That's what I said. It's in there with up to 36 individuals participating in substance abuse recovery program. I guess still speaking my first, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. One of the things that, in discussing this with Ron before, before the meeting, that that really kind of hit me that I think is something important is, and I've said this from the beginning. We've got to have these facilities in our community because that's how we treat people, right? And without these facilities, we can't hear these stories. There's a, there's a small home in my neighborhood and I got to meet a couple of the guys that were there and they successfully recovered and moved on to be successful and they got to meet my kids and I trusted them around my kids and they were good neighbors. Right? They were great neighbors. And the thing that's kind of unique about this situation is it allows us to use such a large facility, right? Where recognizing that there are concerns that people have in the community. Now we got a large facility, which in turn is not going to be a bunch of these additional uses of residential homes specifically. So it's kind of like a win-win. I see it. We get the recovery beds that we need. And it gives us that space where we don't have to go in and gobble up residential properties to do it. So I think it's really a win-win and I appreciate that insight and I look forward to hearing more stories like we heard tonight after this opens and succeeds. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing your stories. I'm brave of you to be transparent with your truth. I think it's great that we're hopefully going to, I hope that we pass this tonight. You know, I think we've got to get past the, I guess the misnomer of what an addict looks like. Cause a lot of people think that every addict looks like the scary person on the street begging or or the criminal or something like that. And the reality is that a lot of people are addicts. And they're in suits every day and they're serving us places and they're going to work every day. Looking like this. A lot of people are struggling. We have kids in our high schools that are addicts already. That got hooked on, you know, their drugs that they were given, getting their wisdom teeth taken out. Student athletes getting hooked on drugs that they got for pain medication from surgeries. I've heard all the stories. My sister's been sober for 18 years. She's a flight attendant. And you would never know. And I'm so proud of her, for being sober for 18 years. And she had to lose everything before she was able to get sober, but I know her journey. I know what she's been through and so we need, like Mr. Mission said, more facilities like that to help every version of an addict, no matter what they look like, because the more addicts we help, the less addicts we have. And then the more that we have that turn into counselors, because you are the best person to speak to an addict because you've walked that road. Those of us who aren't addicts, I haven't walked in your shoes. I can't speak your language, but you can identify with that person and they'll listen to you. So good for you. This is how we help each other in the community. And so I'm so happy to support this. I think this is an asset. What a great way to use that home. And I think it's going to be a real blessing. So I'm happy to support it.
Mr. Mayor. I will be voting in support of this project. There are a couple of things that I just want to identify that I've really appreciated in the context of the time of looking into this and understanding what all this means and what it means for the community, especially in light of recent news and how that all plays together. And I've had the opportunity to connect with Mr. Fury and he has been forthright and would you be comfortable just coming up and sharing some of your background? Because you're, you spoke about Sabrius and we have testimony about Sabrius, but I was, I was personally very impressed with your background, your engagement and how long you've been involved in recovery.
I've I started working in this field in 1979, so sorry, I'm aging myself a little bit, but I, I first became a counselor for adolescents and worked with families for the first four years and in 1983, I, I got my first role as a program director and became executive director and I've served in leadership roles and CEO roles since, working with hospitals, working with treatment centers, for-profit, not-for-profit, a lot of different types of organizations in that time. And I've had the opportunity to work with large healthcare systems. I spent 16 years running behavioral health services for the largest health system in Houston, Texas, which is where I'm from. That's home or my original home. And you know, I've worked with people with addictions for the majority of my career. I am a licensed counselor. I'm still a licensed counselor. And, but I'm glad I have people working for me who do a much better job at that than I do. So I, I'm, I think I'm a pretty good administrator in that, but you know, that's, that's part of my background. I also happen to be an individual that made a decision at a very young age, age of 13, after witnessing things happening in my own family, that I didn't want to go down that road. And I've been sober now for 52 years and that was just a personal choice I made. And I've lived that life. So the people that I work with are people I respect and highly regard. I, I love people with addictions. I love to hear stories about your sister with 18 years of sobriety. I love to hear the stories of the gentleman that came up here tonight. And that is why I'm in this business. That is why I've worked for my career, helping people. Because they, they need what we have and, and that's what I do and I appreciate that. I hope I answered that. That's my back.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fury. I, I just wanted to call you up because I genuinely have appreciated our back and forth in the dialogue and the forthrightness and the openness and the expertise that you've offered to me as I've been walking through assessing this project. I think it's an excellent facility for this. I, I do think it's an asset to our community and I'll be voting in favor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Wilder? Yes, thank you. Appreciate it. I spoken with the director sometime over the past month about the facility and I appreciate you talking with the neighbors. I had a few phone calls of some day, we had some reservations, but I think by you talking to the neighbors and assuring them of the facility and and requirements you had for the facility and the state agency, a certified agency and, and measures you put in place to make sure it's a good, safe environment. It eaves the concerns of the neighborhood. So I really appreciate that and that was very helpful. I haven't received any more additional calls from the neighbors. So thank you for doing that. Thank you.
Anyone else? I thank you for the good service you all want to do for our community. Thank you. Let's vote.
Mayor, sorry, I wanted to make, wait, make one clarification for the record and I had spoken to Councilman Missions about this. It'd be my recommendation to make sure to have the one that's already on there, the maximum residential occupancy condition, as well as the one cited by Councilman Missions with acronym spelled out. That way it's clear that there's a residential occupancy limit as well as the approval requirement.
Yes.
If there's, if there's no objection from council.
And I think just to clarify, my intention was, because that's, that's how the resolution read that I looked at, but I was looking for that second one. So my motion was just to add that second condition. So we should be good.
Let's vote.
Say vote now. Motion passes, six with one absent. Agenda item number eight. Consideration of adopting an ordinance approving the rezoning at 1701 and 1703 Wardsbury Road. Again, Mr. Richard Frischhaisen, City Planner, will provide a summary of the request.
Zone 1701 and 1703 Wardsbury Road from R3 medium density residential to R4 high density residential district conditional to allow for the construction of a nine-unit apartment development. This proposal was orig- this proposal was originally presented at the business item briefing on October 28th as a 10-unit apartment development with 17 parking spaces. The petitioner has since submitted an updated concept plan and proffers for nine units with 22 parking spaces. If the petition is approved, the two existing duplexes would be demolished and the property would be developed into a nine-unit townhome style apartment development. The properties are located at the corner of Harvard Street and Wardsbury Road. VDOT is currently in the design phase for a roundabout at this intersection. At the bib last month or business item briefing, there were some questions about bike and pedestrian affiliate, facilities associated with that project, which were provided in the council memo that went out last week. But to reiterate here, plans for the roundabout also include 1,200 feet of shared use path for bikes and pedestrians, 500 feet of sidewalk and crosswalks at the roundabout itself. Single-family and duplex residential uses are adjoining the property with the Central Virginia Community College campus located across Wardsbury Road. In the vicinity on the 16 and 1700 blocks, there are existing townhomes and townhouse style develop, or apartment developments. Planning Commission recommended approval of this petition at the meeting on October 8th. Thank you and I'll be answered. I'll be here to answer any questions after the public hearing.
Would the petition elect to make presentation?
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. My name is Jamie White. I'm with White Engineering Design and Force. I'm representing MUT82 LLC, who is the current owner of both of these properties. And we're, I want to repeat with Ms. Ms. Frischhaisen has already kind of gone over what we're trying to do here. I want to emphasize some things of how we got to this and why we're doing this now. Right now there's two duplexes there. There's four rental units that are there. We're looking to go from R3 to R4. However, our density is going to be still targeted more towards R3. We're not looking to build some high-density project there. Our density is going to be approximately 9.2 units per acre. The future land use map recommends 12 units per acre in this, in this location. Why are we bringing this now? It's the roundabout. We would not be bringing a project here if it was just a standard intersection. We know this intersection gets a lot of traffic from people from Central Virginia Community College, even students from Liberty that travel up through there to travel to other residences. And through that cut area that kind of gets us back from Ward's Road back over to Timberlake. The roundabout coming to town in this location provides us a unique opportunity to develop this site and kind of alleviate some of the traffic potential that we would have if we were to try to bring something else there now. We're looking to increase five units on this property, which is already four. And we're going to be tying in our location, our driveways coming in on Harvard Street. So we're not looking to tie in anything directly on towards Ferry Road and it's pretty much where the existing entrance is. We have had some preliminary discussions with VDOT. I know they are in a planning stage. Rightaway has already been taken for the properties along there. So this, this roundabout is happening. My last conversations with the VDOT engineer is they're targeting late spring, early summer of next year to start construction on the roundabout. This really fits well with our timeframe of where we would be at for a removing the existing tenants and giving them a notice to vacate the premises, do a build and demolition there and build these units. And we will be looking at completing this project at about the same time that the roundabout there would be open. We believe that, you know, we know traffic is, is a lot of an issue, especially on Wardsbury Road. The, the, the potential that we have here with the circulatory movement, and I've been a part of a number of different roundabout projects. I designed the fish street roundabout years ago. And you can see the change in traffic flow that happens. Once people get used to those types of, you know, traffic maneuvers, it's, it's good flow. It's less opportunity for impacts. We're going to be coming off the side street. VDOT has not had any issue with our preliminary design. We did forward them a preliminary layout. And we will be coordinating with them if we get approval for this plan. So when we look at what we're trying to do in this area and the comparison of what's along Wardsbury Road. You know, we're on R3 and most of these properties are either industrial or, or medium to high density along here. There's other duplexes just down the road. Towards Timberlake, there's a townhouse development there now. Across the street heading back to the old Simpatico building, there's, there's a townhouses there also. So we believe along the corridor here, we're a good fit. We're not changing a lot of the character. We're actually going to be bringing some new buildings. These will be townhouse looking buildings, but they're not townhouses for sale. They're not going to be individual lots. Our project is too small to be a townhouse development. We'd have to be at least two acres to do that. So these are going to be all under one ownership, one management company will be overseeing the property, making sure that the property is kept and that tenants are treating the property with respect and, and the neighborhood as well. So it will be under one management company. So let's see. And I believe that's all I have for now, but if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer.
I have a question. Call you back.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of this project?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor, council members. My name is Bo Walker. And I've been licensed to sell real estate in the state of Virginia for 45 years. I also spent about a part of two decades as a certified residential appraiser for the Veterans Administration. My family, the John Stewart Walker family here in Lynchburg, played a major role in the development of College Park. I worked on construction crews as a kid and I even mowed lawns through this neighborhood. I am no interloper. I've been there. I've been living and working in this neighborhood my entire life. Presently semi-retired, but I maintain an associate broker's license at Blackwater Realty. And I am the developer of this project. In the interest of full disclosure, I'm not here today acting as a real estate professional. I'm here to address two specific, two specific concerns the planning commission raised regarding air rezoning from R3 to R4 on Wardsbury Road. When we first presented our project to the planning commission a few weeks ago, we proposed 10 townhouse style apartments. We felt that style would be a better fit for the neighborhood because aesthetically it fit and as well, we have two other townhouse type projects that are within a stone's throw of this property. The planning commission's first concern was onsite parking and how that might affect traffic and safety at the roundabout. The city code requires one parking spot per apartment. An original plan provided for 1.7. So we actually exceeded the number that we were supposed to have. But after hearing your objections here in the council room here, we decided that you were right and we needed to, to have more parking. And we needed to ensure cars wouldn't be parked on Harvard Street. So in good faith cooperation with the city, we redesigned the project to nine units and 22 parking places. That amounts to two and a half parking spaces per apartment unit. This demonstrates our commitment to addressing the concern of, addressing the commission's legitimate concerns about parking supply. With two parking spots, spots per unit, one for each bedroom, tenant parking will not overflow onto Harvard Street. What really matters here is proximity. This location actually reduces the traffic burden rather than. than adding to it. These apartments will be walking distance to Liberty. Our tenants won't be driving across town, adding to the traffic problems that already exist throughout the city.
Okay, one minute.
I'm not going to finish, shall I?
One minute.
The new the new roundabout will include a crosswalk directly in front of these apartments with completed walkways and hard surfaces connecting to Harvard Street and leading directly to Liberty University's entrance. This makes our development the closest off-campus housing available to Liberty students. Tenants won't have to take cars on their daily commute. They can walk, they can bike, they can use scooters, and they can ride a skateboard if they want to. Parents can drop their kids off in Lynchburg for school. Confident in the fact that their children can access any infrastructure or the school that is necessary without the use of a car. So we've not only provided sufficient parking, we've actively taken vehicles off the road at this intersection. The second concern, that multi-unit residential development would damage the neighborhood's integrity. This deserves a direct factual response. Most, if not all, are one residences in this area are behind Wards Ferry Road.
Thank you, sir. That's it. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition?
My name is Charmaine Davis, one one six Temple Circle. I live in a neighborhood, College Park, and I've been there for seventeen years with my family. We have seven children gone through. Our seventh one will be graduating from Heritage High School. I am in total opposition of this because I've also been in front of this council before to get you guys to manage the traffic that goes in and out of Heritage High School in the mornings. And with this new development, it's going to cause even extra trouble. I live there. I walk that neighborhood almost all the time. I'm concerned that some people from these apartment units will will have dogs that they're walking and may not pick up after the dogs. In our neighborhood, everyone's very responsible with their pets and stuff. And but really, seriously, it's the impact that it will have on us because we go in and out of that neighborhood for shopping, for school, for work. And, I mean, and now, and what is the plan? Just the roundabout? Because that road is very busy. I go out of there at near eight o'clock in the morning. There's lots of traffic. It's backed up on both ways. People trying to get down to CBCC, get to Wards Road, or get to Liberty, or go out to Timberlake. And it doesn't look like there's a good plan for traffic flow there. And also, once the construction starts, there's only three entrances to our neighborhood. And so we're going to be backed up for our school buses, people going to work, people maybe having to go to doctor, or whatever they have to do. And it's just going to impact our neighborhood. And it's a really nice neighborhood. It's very mature and established with nice trees, and we have nice animals there, you know. I grew up in the country. I never seen so many animals before in my life until I moved to one one six Temple Circle. So it is, I just think it'd be a bad impact on our on our neighborhood with the townhouses that are with the duplexes that are existing there right now. They just fit right into the neighborhood. And so I would be very saddened to see see the integrity of the interests of our neighborhood being impacted in this way with, you know, even more dense. And I, you know, I live there. My kids live there. My husband lives there. And so just to accommodate people who are just going to come and go, you know, for college, it's just not a good, good enough reason for me to to destroy our way of life and living at in our College Park neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Speaking in opposition?
My name is Tommy Meadows. I live at one oh nine Temple Circle. And today I'm going to be speaking on behalf of the College Park community. Good evening, everyone. Thank you, City Council, for providing the opportunity to speak tonight. I'm here on behalf of the College Park community. We are asking you to deny the rezoning of seventeen oh one and seventeen oh three Wards Ferry Road, which is located on the front part of the College Park neighborhood. First concern, I've got several concerns I want to share. First concern, and probably one of the most important, is the safety issues on Ward Ferry Road. Ward Ferry Road is a safety issue because of the amount of traffic that uses it daily. The current proposal will add nine new apartments, and this will only add to the intensity of the traffic. Not only are we adding more apartments, but we are also putting them in an area that will butt up against a new traffic circle. Increasing density without proper infrastructure raises real safety concerns for pedestrians, drivers, and residents alike. Second, we need to talk about the nature of these rentals. The proposed apartments are likely to be occupied by college students, given that there are two-bedroom layout and they are close to campus. That means more turnover, more cars, and potentially more noise. Our neighborhood was designed and zoned, designed and zoned for single-family homes, not high-density student housing. By allowing this development, we risk undermining the very zoning protections that have kept our community cohesive and livable. Third, the parking situation is simply inadequate. Nine apartments with two bedrooms each have a minimum of eight needing eighteen parking spaces. The plan calls for twenty parking spaces. Friends, if you've ever been in college, friends will come over frequently to visit. Where would the overflow go? Onto the streets? Onto the neighboring yards? This isn't just inconvenient. It's a recipe for congestion, frustration, and conflict. Our neighborhood streets are already being used for parking from student rentals. Adding more cars without a real plan is irresponsible. Fourth, we have to consider the precedent this sets. Right now, two duplexes are being removed to make room for apartments. But what happens next? If this project is approved, what's to stop the developers from replacing the remaining duplexes with more, even more apartments? We could be looking at twenty to forty more apartments being built in the front of our College Park neighborhood. That's not just a change. That's a transformation. And once it starts, it's hard to stop. We need to think long term and protect the integrity of our community before it's too late. And finally, let's not forget the neighbors who live directly behind the proposed development. These are families who will suddenly have a parking lot in their backyard. Twenty parking spaces with cars coming and going at all hours, headlights shining into windows, engines revving, and people talking. That's a major disruption to the peace, privacy, and property value. Would any of us want that behind our homes? In closing, I urge the council to consider the full impact of the proposal, not just on paper, but in real life. On the families?
Thank you, sir.
May I, just like everyone else, have, I've got about thirty more seconds. I might be thirty-eight seconds.
Go ahead.
Okay. Not just on paper, but in real life. On the families who live here, on the safety of our streets, on the future of our neighborhood. We're not opposed to growth, but it has to be thoughtful, balanced, and respectful of the community that's already there. Thank you for your time and listening to our concerns. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition?
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, I would be remiss not to introduce myself if you had more interaction with my wife, Donna Douglas Bear, former principal at Paul Monroe. And I know many of you know her well. I am her lowly husband, Michael. Michael Bear, four twenty-four College Park Drive, longtime resident. We had a home, a young married couple. We chose to build a home in College Park. So as a proponent of Wards Ferry Road and an advocate of so many things that have been done there, I watch, have a very watchful eye from one end of Wards Ferry Road to the other. And I've seen that beautiful development at Target and up at Heritage High School. And I've prayed for this roundabout. Most people don't like them. I'm very fond of them. And this is going to be a great interaction. And as I travel home from my business on Ward's Road and come up the hill, I'm always greeted by a beautiful row of duplexes. They look like single-family homes. We have three on one end. We have four on the other. Total of seven. Now we want to demolish two. Behind there are ninety-eight homes. We chose to build our second home in College Park. We've been residents there for thirty-one years. So I'm an advocate. And I've watched most of these developments being done on either end. And I dare say that I can't think of one that has adversely affected Vista Acres or any of the other roads along there. And I really, as John Meadows pointed out to you, can only imagine what it would be like to have this spiral that all five, five, seven of those homes turn into this. Now, I can't imagine that anyone, the beautiful serenity of our neighborhood, and it's quite nice. We've been lucky to have a lot of wonderful young families come in and transition. And we're always improving. We have a wonderful neighborhood. I can't imagine anyone wanting to come up and see the backside of a townhouse on Wards Ferry Road. I know there are townhouses on Wards Ferry Road. John Stewart Walker built College Park townhouses. But if you notice, they're in a U shape, and they face the road, you can see what's happening. I don't think anyone would want to come up to that intersection and look up and see the backside of townhouses, townhouses and propensity for all those townhouses there. Very fond of Rush Homes, very fond of what they have done. And I would just like to say that, like you chose to approve the conditional use permit for the old Miller home, for this group home, that there is a place for this Rush Home development, but it's not in this location. So I beg you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition of this project?
Hello, my name is Colleen Scott. I live in College Park neighborhood as well. I have the same concerns as all of my lovely neighbors do. I am also concerned with the safety on Wards Ferry Road. We have a lot of students now living in the townhouses that are currently built there. They like to walk in our neighborhood. I don't have an issue with anybody walking in our neighborhood. I walk in my neighborhood almost every day. But they're crossing Wards Ferry Road. They're sitting there waiting and waiting and waiting for the traffic to clear to cross the road. It's just dangerous. I'm scared something's going to happen to somebody. In addition to that, it's the congestion that's going to add towards Ferry Road, especially at Heritage High School intersection. If you ever have to go through that intersection in the evening, or in the morning especially, you know that it is a nightmare. I don't understand why we keep building on this road. We love our neighborhood. I cannot imagine a parking lot and townhouses being added to the neighborhood. And a big concern I had in listening to them with the proposal was the parking lot using a side street to get in and out of the parking lot. That means our neighborhood. Those roads are our neighborhood. So we already have a lot of parking in our neighborhood in other yards because we have students now renting some of the houses. And so they're parking in their yards and in the yards near them. And so obviously, this is going to continue to happen even more in having cars in our neighborhood parked on the roads and in our yards with more houses. So that's all.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition of this project? Are there any voicemails? There is none. Public hearing is now closed. Yes, Mr. Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to make a motion to deny.
Hold on. Would you like to make a rebuttal? Yes, sir. Would you like to?
The public hearing has already been closed, Mr. Mayor.
I'm going to let him make his rebuttal.
So I heard some of the issues that some of the neighbors have brought up. And I totally understand where they're coming from. Wards Ferry Road has been a busy road. It continues to be a busy road. I think that's why you've seen the city invest so much in improvements on Wards Ferry Road. You look at the Heritage, Timberlake intersection up that on that end of it, you look at the roundabout that's happening here, there's improvements that are going on, I think, at the same time at Atlanta Avenue and Wards Ferry Road. So there's, I know there was a corridor study done several years ago that kind of identified some issues that were out there. And I think the city has put a big investment in trying to alleviate that. I want to stress again, the reason why we're doing this now is because the roundabout is coming. I would not be bringing this proposal, I wouldn't be a part of bringing the proposal there if it was just a standard intersection at Harvard Street and Wards Ferry Road, because we know that there's such an issue there with cars waiting to get out. The traffic, once the roundabout is installed, the traffic is going to flow through there fairly well. And that will alleviate a lot of the traffic concerns with the backups and things like that. I don't know. Just referencing things like we did at Fifth and Federal with that roundabout there years ago, there used to be a lot of backup of traffic, people waiting to cross, get across. That has alleviated. I mean, you go through there now, you never even stop. So I think this helps alleviate some of those concerns as well. We do have to meet landscape buffering between the going from R four to and then the adjoining, any other adjoining residential properties. So we will have a landscape buffer there. So that'll provide some level of buffering and light, just, you know, blocking and things like that from cars coming in and out of there as well. Wards Ferry Road along there, and I understand that the neighborhood behind us is zoned R one. And I have learned my lesson of trying to rezone R one to R four. And I would never try to do that again, because I understand that. What we are at and along this corridor is R three already, which the future land use map recommends twelve units per acre. And we're suggesting an improvement here that is less than what the future land use map calls for in the area. This location, I think, is an ideal location, especially with the improvements, the additions of some sidewalks that will go through the around the roundabout, the connectivity that we have and the proximity to Liberty, Central Virginia, Central Virginia Community College, all the shopping options that are along Ward's Road. It actually produces a potential here for a, you know, pedestrian bike friendly community in the area. I think it's an opportunity here in this spot with, and not a huge increase. And we're going from four units to nine units. We're not looking to put apartments here. And what we have proffered here on these two lots is a total of nine units. And I understand that there's other town, I mean, duplexes there, or what could they do? But each of these projects are looked at their own merit. I think with us tying into Harvard Street with our, and I didn't mean to call it a side street as a derogatory term, but it has less traffic than Wards Ferry Road. And if our tie-in was directly on Wards Ferry, that might would be a different story for us. And if if our tie in was directly on the Ward's Ferry, that might would be a different story for us. We're requirements for the city is only one space per unit, no matter how many bedrooms there are. We are offering two point four spaces per. We've got twenty two spaces, not twenty on on the property, which meets and exceeds what the city requires. And even other localities where I've done numerous townhouse developments and multifamily developments. So I don't see parking that's going to be an issue here. So if you have any questions, as you go through, send me a
Mr. Michigan.
Motion still stands. I make a motion to deny.
Second. Speak to your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I look at this, and I appreciate the presentation. You know, look at this map right here. And and we've got R one on College Park Drive, and then it's buffered with R three. And then when you go a little further down down the road, you've got R four across the street, right? It's it's set up that way to buffer the the R three, or excuse me, the the R one from the R four is that that R three is a buffer. And and when you look at this rezoning to R four kind of almost feels a little bit like spot zoning to me in that particular spot. And I and I think that it is just going to, it's clear, the residents of College Park have come out here tonight, and it's going to be detrimental to the harmony of that community. And we need to preserve that neighborhood. That's one of our responsibilities as a council. And 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 I appreciate the feedback that they've given us tonight. You know, they're pretty loud and clear. And the congestion that that's going to bring to that intersection is going to significantly disrupt that harmony in that community. And for those reasons, I am opposed to the project, and that's why I make the motion to deny.
Listening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'm opposing this for similar reasons to other developments on Ward's Ferry. Primary reason being of traffic. It's it's not good, and we are doing some things to alleviate that, but I think this is getting the car to ahead of the horse. I'd really like to see how that roundabout works before we build it out. I'm surprised we're doing things concurrently. I think it would be wise to see how this affects the neighborhood. But one of the primary things that concerns me, because I love business and I love entrepreneurs and I love your commitment to try to make this work, and your proffer was was helpful. However, it doesn't change the safety and security that much of of the traffic on the road. But conserving the character of a beautiful gem of a neighborhood like College Park, this is Ward three, so I have a special interest in Ward three. And we are made up in Ward three of a lot of incredibly beautiful legacy neighborhoods. They really define the character of Ward three. And this is one of the most premier ones, College Park. It was built around college long before Liberty University even was a a name. And the people there are amazing, gone door to door multiple times. They're older community, and this will definitely change the character of the neighborhood, and I want to preserve that. Because once you go down this road, there's really no going back. And there is a of a way this could grow into something even more concerning with other nearby localities. So I don't want to see that. I think of my neighborhood, I think of all these neighborhoods in Ward three, where the entrance is your first impression of what you think of that neighborhood. And when you come in my neighborhood, there's even, you know, signs for the neighborhood. It's it's a community and it's our unity. It's what brings us together and makes us proud. And many of us have been there for years and years and years. And College Park is is no different than that. And to think that this is the first thing you see coming into that gem of a neighborhood concerns me, and I don't think it's the best use going forward. So I'm mostly opposing it for the safety of Ward's Ferry Road, which I've indicated multiple times as a major concern based on the traffic. But also, I I have a place in my heart for some of the communities in my ward that have been there longer than I've been alive in some cases, and are just great places for families to raise their kids. And I want to preserve that if I have any any ability to do so. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Reed.
Mr. President, so there are two bedroom units, and they're really being built for student housing purposes, right? I mean, that's kind of the goal, is what it sounded like the target was for student housing for Liberty.
They they didn't indicate that specifically, but that's the sense that I'm getting based on on they said.
Right. So based on our ordinance, I know we can't have more than three unrelated people living in a house. However, if it's a two bedroom, there's no rule against three people living in a two bedroom, no, correct?
No.
So technically, for all intents and purposes, potentially, a student, more than two students could live in these.
That that could be possible.
I mean, if it's targeted towards students. I'm just trying to think logistically, if 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 the marketing strategy was targeted towards students, it could be more than two students in in a two bedroom. As far as the parking or the concern for, we we don't really know the number of it. And that can be true to any. I'm just thinking for our investors and developers that are that are, you know, targeting students and with these concerns specifically in this area, when we know we get a lot of no's, as we know, in this straight. Thank you, Mr. President. Because of the concerns on safety and traffic, everything, I just feel like we've got to, I don't, I I understand investors, and I want you to make money, and I want you to be able to utilize what you purchased and that work to your benefit. So I don't know how, I want to be able to say yes, because you're in business. It just but I also want to respect the voice of the citizens and their concerns. We just continue to hear the same thing about this area with traffic, the neighborhood. I think that the roundabout is going to be good. And you know, you're not asking a ton. I mean, to go from four to nine doesn't sound like a ton as far as roads on the street, but I also know the street, the the overflow into the neighborhoods can be a concern, and we do hear that a lot in other neighborhoods too. And we just don't know how many people are actually going to even be residing if it's really targeted toward students. You just don't know if it'll be two two students in a in an apartment or a townhouse or more than two, depending on how creative they get with trying to save money, because they are trying to save money. So I don't know what to tell you. I I mean, I don't know what your alternatives are. I just don't know. I don't know if I could support it because I think there's just too many what ifs right now. I don't even know what to direct you to do to tell you to come back because I just I don't really have, I I'm just telling you my thoughts because I I feel, I mean, I feel bad because I want your investment to work for you. I just don't know how else to tell you to to what what to do with it, to turn it around for you, because I'm not sure what else you could do. But because you know, you you took down the duplexes, which sound like they were great as far as being okay with the residents, but I don't know. So anyway. That's all I got for you. Sorry.
Thank you. I'm just trying to make sure I understand the project. So currently, there are two duplexes on the property, and we're going to four. There were four. Four units. I'm sorry.
On seventeen oh one and seventeen oh three, there is a duplex on each. So two units each, four total. They want to go to nine apartment units.
Four to nine.
Right. And and the duplexes are still there. Yes. Yeah.
Okay. I'm I'm just trying to make sure what by right, what can it do on that property anyway, if it'll change its own?
So R three allows smaller lot, single family detached housing and also duplexes at a density of up to ten point eight nine units per acre. So Mr. White is correct. What they're proposing is actually less dense than you could do in the R three. Because of the proffered number, the limit of nine, instead of the normal R four limit of like twenty one point something. However, that doesn't mean just with the configuration of the site, I don't know that they could get that full ten point eight nine units per acre. But that is what R three allows, is single family and duplex at densities of up to ten point eight nine units per acre.
So it could still, say that last piece again, I'm sorry.
Our our three allows by right single family and duplexes up to ten unit, ten point eight nine units per acre. So I mean, there is a potential that, you know, this could be resubdivided in a way to create possibly more smaller lot, single family, or I don't know if there's a different way to configure the duplexes. I mean, that's not for staff to to figure out on the highest and and best use, but we make recommendations on what is brought forward to us.
Which is nine units to six, I guess, when the planning commission portion, did they expect to be a lot more traffic added to the Ward's Ferry Road?
So Planning Commission recommended approval. There were a couple of people who expressed concerns about traffic, but it ultimately did receive an approval recommendation from from Planning Commission.
So traffic was, there was some concerns about traffic, but it wasn't mitigating factor to say it's going to add this much to the traffic.
Right. It did not. It did not rise to the level of requiring a traffic study because it is such a small project.
Yeah, yeah. Now, isn't there, I'm trying, I'm trying to get over the part is when you go, when you leave C V C C and go to the left, aren't there like townhouses and apartments right there?
So it's actually, so if you go to the left, so the bottom of the screen here that you're seeing, that those are townhomes. Also, at the the top part of the screen, that's apartment style, sorry, townhome style apartments.
Yes, already. My my only thing is, it's already so many townhomes already there. Apartment looking townhouse already there, just to see how, my my thought is, I I understand, I understand what the neighbors are saying. But I just just looks similar to the was already there on that street. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Mr. Tim.
And I I kind of went back and forth on this one, but I spent some wonderful time in College Park today. And I I try to drive by every site and and spend some time. And it is a distinct neighborhood from the the townhomes that are currently in that vicinity. So I that was, that was the, what I felt as I was in the neighborhood and spending time in the neighborhood. It's not an area that I frequent as much, so I was not as familiar until I spent time over there today. But a lot of that R four density is across the street. And then the the duplexes are still standing or currently rented, but they do serve as a buffer. I opposed another development earlier this year in that same corridor, largely because of its proximity to a major intersection, and I I won't go into all of that now. I had a number of reasons for that. But this is also right on top of an intersection that is undergoing some some key changes. And so with that for the continuity of the neighborhood and my experience there, and then also the concerns as far as it being right on top of that intersection, I am going to vote no. Well, I'm going to vote yes on your motion for denial.
Ms. Reed.
Sorry, I just don't know. I mean, I'm trying to familiarize my, I wish I had driven over there today. I'm trying to familiarize myself with where it is. Is there a way we can bring it back so I can? Not just for me, but do we have to do it tonight? Like, is there a timeliness situation here that? I don't know.
There's more information you need or?
You can move the phone.
I mean, whatever I
Yeah.
I drive through there every day. I live right next door to College Park. And this is going to severely impact the harmony of that community. It what Councilman Timmer said is absolutely right. There is a distinct difference between the College Park Townhomes and the College Park Neighborhood. This this is going to basically be absorbed into the College Park Neighborhood, what's what's happening here with the specifically with the entrance on Harvard Street. And and I just the congestion is too much right there right now. The neighbors were loud and clear about what this is going to do for the harmony in their community. And for those reasons, I ask that people support the denial.
Now, to deny. Sorry, yours did not come through.
It says I did.
All right, I'll reset the vote. Initiating the vote now. I'm so sorry, it's not capturing. May I call for the voice vote?
Yes.
Okay. Councilor Missions?
Yes.
Councilor Reed?
Yes.
Councilor Timmer? Councilor Wilder?
No.
Vice Mayor Deemer?
Yes.
Mayor Taylor?
Yes.
The motion passes. Agenda item number nine. Consideration of adopting a resolution approving a lease agreement between the City of Lynchburg Bon Air Brokerage Company LLC and Davis Air Inc. to allow Bon Air to lease and use the property at Lynchburg Regional Airport. This item went to the Physical Development Committee this afternoon. Cedric Simon, Airport Director, will now provide a summary of the request.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. Before you tonight to recommend a lease agreement between the City of Lynchburg and Bon Air Brokerage, as well as Davis Air. The space we're recommending to lease is referred to as Hangar Twelve and its associated office space. The tenant that's currently in Hangar Twelve asked us to terminate their lease as they are moving, moving out of the aviation sector, so they asked to terminate that. And we're, we put it up to an RFP process in September. We received two proposals, one from Freedom Aviation and one from Bon Air Brokerage. The initial lease term on would be for five years, starting, if approved, would start on January first of twenty twenty six and include an option to extend for five additional years. Rent would be thirteen thousand five hundred months with the escalators built in. Y'all may remember about a month ago, I was up here talking about hangars one and three, both Bon Air, Bon Air has been on the airfield for a few years. Davis Air is one of their business partners. They do the air medical transport. So again, we are, we briefed this item at the Physical Development Committee this afternoon, and we recommend approving a resolution to approve the lease agreement between Bon Air and Davis Air. I'd be happy to answer any questions after public hearing.
Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this project? Mr. Falwell?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council. As y'all remember, my name is Kyle Falwell. I'm owner of Bon Air Brokerage and Vice President of Davis Air. First of all, I'd like to thank Cedric and his team for recommending us for Hangar Twelve and RFP for this hangar. Last time I was here, we kind of spoke about what, you know, we do with the Oregon flights and stuff like that, and I'd like to tell you just a little bit more about Bon Air and Davis Air and what we do. We believe strongly in giving back and being a a positive member of the community. And we do that in many ways with many different charities that we we help out, one being Moustache for Kids, where I see Dr. Wilder wearing the 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 badge there. We actually host the stash bash at our hangar. We've been doing that for five years, and it's something we're very proud to be part of. They raised, well, on track to raise seven hundred thousand dollars this year for the kids and the the local charities for the kids. And so we're 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 pumped to be part of that. We also have been big in disaster relief for years. So we started off eight years ago with Hurricane Irma Maria. We were the first airplane down there in the islands to provide evacuate people and and take in supplies. We then did it for Hurricane Dorian down in the Abco Islands. Um, we were, once again, the first airplane there. I was there, um, taking non-responsive children out, uh, to get them to triage. And so that's, uh, it's something near and dear to our hearts. And then we were, uh, just a year ago, we were there for Hurricane Haley. We were the first jet to be, uh, down there and, and helping the mountains of North Carolina. Uh, we, we partner with Central Virginia Career Works here locally, uh, help with interns there with local high schools that come in, in, intern with us. We've had interns from E C Glass, V S, Virginia Tech. Um, I bring this up because, you know, we, 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 we feel strongly about, you know, giving back to the community and giving back. We're blessed to be where we are and, and, uh, and so we hope y'all support us so we can continue to do that. Um, we're also kind of essential to, uh, multiple local businesses. Uh, one of the largest employers uh, here in, in the city of Lynchburg was one of our major customers that we manage two jets for. We manage jets for multiple other businesses here in Lynchburg. That's important for times like right now when the government's been closed down and the airlines are struggling. And these business owners still need to get to places to continue to keep the business coming in and the, the, the dollars flowing in. Um, we, we, after the last meeting, I, I left here and went straight to Vegas and secured a deal for three more jets. Um, so we're going to continue our growth here. We're, we're pretty proud of that. Um, yeah, unfortunately, uh, Campbell County gets all the personal property tax on those, but, uh, but anyways, it, it, it works out well for, for everybody and we're going to continue growing and continue providing more jobs here. Um, you know, at the last meeting, y'all recommended, uh, hangars, one and three, based on RFP, hoping the, the, what's good for the goose is good for the gander. And, uh, really appreciate y'all's support and everything y'all do. And, uh, we look forward to continuing our growth here in Lynchburg, hopefully. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor?
Good evening. I'm Andrew Wallace, Bedford resident, uh, president of Freedom. So obviously you guys are familiar with all of us. I, uh, just wanted to speak in favor. Um, you know, the process went through, obviously we bid on it. We would have loved to have that space. But I understand the, um, you know, the thoughtfulness that you guys had that we were torn on the decision. You don't want to put anybody in a place where they don't have somewhere to operate their business. And I think, um, at the end of the day, it probably gives, uh, Bon Air a better facility to, to operate some of their business. And we just wanted to thank the, uh, city folks for the, the thoughtfulness and the decision, the process. And, you know, say, we look forward to working with, with them and, um, just thank you guys all for your time. And we support the, uh, the decision that the city folks have. So.
In favor? Anyone who will speak in opposition to this project? Is there any votes mailed? Public hearing is now closed. I defer to the Chair of this committee, P, P, PDC, Ms. Timmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As staff did present a presentation today in PDC, uh, we did not take a vote because of the public hearing tonight. But one of the, um, pieces of information that staff presented was Davis Air's, um, co-signing with the nature of the agreement, uh, moving forward in the RFP.
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Ms. Reed.
Oh, and I'll, sorry. Yeah. Well, go ahead. You can make it and I'll, yeah.
Yeah, I would love to move, um, that we, um, support, um, the process of, of, uh, Mr. Fallwell getting, uh, and Davis Aviation getting, um, um, Hangar Twelve. And I love this because this is how we work together. So I think this is a great compromise and, uh, well deserved. And I hope that you'll still host the, the stash bash in twelve now. Yes, great.
And I'll second the motion.
You want to speak to your second?
I, I, I just think that this will be a great partnership moving forward and, um, I'm grateful for all the work that staff's put into it. This is great. Thank you.
Ms. Miss.
No, it's great. It's an easy one, easy to approve. Um, thank you guys for coming back. Thank you, Cedric and staff for, you know, following through on the process and you won, you won the bid and I think it's really, really cool when your competitor shows up and supports it. So I want to thank Andrew and Freedom Aviation as well for showing up and supporting that. So I appreciate that. This is an easy one. Thank you.
Ms. Reed. Because I guess I should say, um, Bon Air Brokerage Company and Davis Air will allow Bon Air to lease and use the property at the Lynchburg Regional Airport properly. Sorry.
Thank you.
Okay. That's a motion.
Yes, most of them. No more discussion. Let's vote.
Initiating the vote now. The motion passes six with one absent. The next section is public comment. Speakers have three minutes to talk. If you're speaking for a group, you have five. City council listens to your comments and may ask the city manager to follow up. Citizens often have different opinions to make sure everyone feels comfortable speaking. There's no applause, cheers, jeers, or jeers. Do not intimidate, insult, or disrupt others. Do not use profanity, promote businesses, or campaign for office. Agenda item number ten.
Just, I've spoken with Jesse Hughes. He's not going to be here tonight, so you can strike him from.
Oh, thank you very much. That was agenda item number eleven. Agenda item number ten. Here from a group representative regarding, thank you to Parks and Recreation, L P D, and other city departments, Jen Staten, Indivisible Lynchburg.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm Jennifer Staten. I live in Ward One and I am here to represent Indivisible Lynchburg. I want to begin by saying thank you to our community, to our partners and to the city of Lynchburg for helping create conditions where people can gather, express themselves, and make a difference. I'd like to tell you guys a little bit about our No Kings two point O rally that took place at Miller Park on October eighteenth. It was truly a remarkable day. More than twelve hundred people came together in community and purpose. We collected donations for Food Not Bombs, for public radio, and we gathered books to restock the little free libraries all around town. It was a beautiful, peaceful afternoon filled with powerful speakers, uplifting music, generous hearts, and a contagious community spirit. We were even lucky enough to have people show up in their inflatable costumes. We had what is now known as the Portland Frog. We had chickens. We had Snoopy. It was really a fun, fun day. We had a costume contest. Lady Liberty was there. Um, you know, it was, it was a wonderful day. Um, we are also proud that Lynchburg was a part of that National Day of Action, one that saw more than seven million people from across the country and around the world. Um, and that's really just the beginning of the story of what Indivisible Lynchburg has accomplished this year. Over the past several months, Indivisible Lynchburg and our partnering organizations have hosted a number of major community events, including the International Women's Day March in downtown, the Hands Off Rally, the Labor Day Vigil, um, a May Day Strong Rally down at the corner, um, of Jefferson Street by Amazement Square. Um, we had the Good Trouble Lives On March that started at Miller Park, went up by Glass and back around to the park in honor of John Lewis. We had our first No Kings protest downtown. That one was attended by about seven hundred people. Um, and just last night, we were able to hold a Veterans Day Candlelight Vigil at Monument Terrace. We had local veterans tell us about their struggles with the current veteran healthcare system and their concerns about, um, veteran and soldier suicides, among other things. It was a really powerful night and we were really grateful to be able to host that. Um, altogether, we've organized those six large scale rallies and more than thirty smaller community actions since March. Um, none of these would be possible without a city that values civic engagement, protects freedom of assembly, and upholds freedom of speech. We are especially grateful for the advice and support we received from the Parks and Recreation Department, the Lynchburg City Police Department, and the City Communications and Public Relation Team. The process of securing permits, renting facilities, developing safety plans, understanding event insurance can be very daunting. Um, thanks to their guidance and collaboration, all of our events have run safely, peacefully, and nearly seamlessly. So to the city of Lynchburg, thank you for your professionalism, your guidance, this is mostly to staff, um, your collaboration. Thank you for honoring the freedoms, not just in principle, but in practice. And to this community, thank you for showing up, for caring deeply, and for proving that even a small city, we can be a part of something extraordinarily big. We are grateful. We are energized. We are indivisible. And we are building a progressive Blue Ridge and a progressive Lynchburg. Thank you. And also thank you for taking care of Bon Air. Um, my personal note here, I'll cover up my badge. Um, Kyle's team, my, my little girl is in the Corps of Cadets at Virginia Tech, and her love for aviation started with that airshow that they helped, um, facilitate. And after that, her fifth birthday party, all she wanted was to have a birthday party at an airport. And Kyle made that happen and, um, it was a life-changing experience. And I'm so glad that we were able to support a community business that's just been such a part of my family's personal life. So thank you, guys.
Agenda item number eleven was strike through. Uh, agenda item number twelve was here from a group representative regarding confusion, Greg Berry, City Elders, who I don't see in the audience. Moving on to the next section, which is general business, includes new items for discussion. Agenda item number thirteen. Uh, consideration of adopting a resolution improving Lynchburg redevelopment housing authority revenue bond issuance for thirteen hundred Campbell Avenue. This item was tabled from the October twenty eighth meeting and discussed earlier today during city council's work session.
I'll speak to you second. Speak to you first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, Mr. Hall, for making the trip down here and thank you for your patience. Um, also thank you to city staff for helping us work this one through a little bit more and, and taking the time to do that. And thank you for council for, um, taking that time as well. I greatly appreciate it. Uh, I, I, I was wondering how the magic is done, Mr. Hall, because to come in at that price point with that level of investment, um, was not making sense to me until, um, diving into how those, uh, credits have the opportunity to work together and, and, um, learning a lot of new things about tax credits and, and how they relate. Uh, so with that, I'm, I'm happy to move for that approval. I think it'll be a great project in the area. Um, my, my only outstanding question, I'm happy to move for approval, is just projected timeline of, of what this looks like for the community, what people can expect. Um, is everyone comfortable if Mr. Hall comes forward and kind of explains some of that briefly, but I still move for approval.
Mr. Mayor, Assistant Mayor and council members, thank you very much and thank you, uh, for the, that commentary. We have our construction and long-term financing approved and in place. We have the tax credits from the V H D A and we have our federal historic tax credits, uh, sold to Fossen Company, which is really Chase Bank. Uh, we have one credit, the, uh, what is called the Lytech credit that we have yet to place, but expect to do that in the next thirty days. And that would put us on about a ninety to a hundred day, twenty day clock to close all of that and start construction. So the projection is here is probably second quarter next year, we'll begin construction of the project. And thank you very much for that commentary on the tax credits. It's, it's remarkable that we've been able to stack all that so that we have wind up with a very low, low, or, uh, long-term debt piece. About twenty percent of the total capital stack, the enormous amount of equity in the project should be a great deal for everyone.
Thank you, sir. Speak to your second.
Yes, again, thank you for coming back and really appreciate it.
Again, I'm on the Housing Authority Board. We already approved the project and vetted the company. Um, so I appreciate you coming back second time to talk about the project. Again, it's the Barker, Barker Jennings Building that has been sitting there for quite some time, empty. Um, a company came in and purchased it, then they changed their mind. This company ended up buying back, bought the property as well. So I'm glad to see finally that property being renovated, um, for residential housing apartments, whatever, whatever. I was a, apartments where a person was certain, like sort of low income, was income based of some sort. Right. Right. So again, it's just glad to see the property being renovated because of a high sword of community. So I'm glad for that. Thank you.
Appreciate you holding on for two weeks and I'm glad that we got the presentation, we got the work session today. Thank you for that. And thank you staff for the due diligence. And, and I think that it was really worth the time. I know you put a lot of work into that. Presentation that we had from the gentleman, I can't remember his name, with the redevelopment and housing authority. Just, yeah, that was fantastic and just appreciate what you guys are doing. It is a really neat project and it will be fantastic to see life breathed into the Barker Jennings Building and can't wait to see you get it done.
Most demon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for hanging out to the better end here. Appreciate your patience. Glad you stayed. I had some questions. All my questions have been answered. Uh, thank, thank you to the staff. And, uh, with that thumbs up, I'm absolutely happy to see a building I've known most of my life, you know, it's a landmark for us who lived in Lynchburg a long time be used. We, we hate empty buildings and we have a war against them. And thank you for joining that war with us.
Ms. Tim. No more discussion. Let's vote.
Initiating the vote now. The motion passes six with one absent.
Motion.
Motion adjourned.
Motion to adjourn. Meeting is adjourned. Next meeting is.
We doing call session?
No, University of Lynchburg, the eighteenth at six o'clock. University of Lynchburg, the eighteenth at six o'clock.